Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. And our first agenda is a pledge of allegiance in our invocation by our city manager.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we ask that you give us insight to live with integrity. Help us to make decisions that are good for all. Also, help us and grant us the humility to always seek your will in all that we do and say. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
We have a report from our Mission Chamber of Commerce. And who is it today?
Hello, esteemed members of the Council. I'll be speaking on behalf of George Myers, who resigned as of Friday effective date. I have some pamphlets for you guys.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
My name is Naveen Buxanya. I'm the chairman of the Chamber of Commerce. Just want to go over some events that we had this past month and let you know what events that we have in the upcoming future. So we had a ribbon cutting for Mission Health Drive on the Canaan 328 Sherry Road. It was a very nice event. Hope you guys were there. Then we also had an after-hours mixer sponsored by Kokos. That's usually one of our best mixers. And then we had Coffee Connection sponsored by one of our Platinum Members Royal Technologies. The big event that we have coming up is the golf tournament on April 29th, and we're still accepting sponsorships. That's going well. We have a committee. We're almost done with all the holes, but we're still looking for some title sponsors. As far as the search for the new CEO, that's ongoing, and we're accepting applications, and we're still reviewing it as part of the executive board. Are there any questions?
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is a presentation by our sanitation department.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I would like to take the time to advise City Council for a project that the sanitation department will be in charge of from the months of March through May. We have began continuing passing on, we have begun to and will continue dropping off door hangers advising the public of bulky item collection. The items will be placed on the curb and picked up on the designated date of the area. The following items are examples of what we will be picking up. Appliances, mattresses, water heaters, et cetera. This will be helping the citizens get rid of items that they may have been wanting to get rid of for a while. The city will be divided in four parts. Let me give you an example of the...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Sasa.
Thank you.
Beginning on March 21st, we'll be targeting the area of east of Conway and north of Business 83. That area already has had their door hangers already available to them. We have been getting calls of where to put it and how to place it and what items if they will not be allowed. Some of the items will be, for example, any paints, household cleaners, motor oil, anything hazardous, and tires. No construction debris, any remodeling, any chinked roof or materials. We just want to target the maybe mattresses, probably an old sofa, an old chester shelf, anything that they've been wanting to get rid of. And then on April the 4th, we'll be west of Conway, north of Business 83. And then April the 25th, east of Conway, south of Business 83. And on May the 9th, west of Conway and south of 83. Hopefully, this project will help the citizens get rid of some of the items that they've been having there for a while, and not just the brush. And we'll be having, right now, I'm already going into that week three, picking up the brush, so we don't have so much to do. Hopefully, the citizens do take advantage of it, and we'll help them out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sasa.
Thank you.
Well, I just want to make sure that if somebody else calls and the date is not here, we want to be able to go back and collect them. One of the things that we had problems with before was they won't want to go back and pick up the brush or anything else. We don't want to go by. I don't think we would like to go back to the old ways where, well, we're only going to pick you up on Mondays, March 21st, and that's it. If you don't have it out there, we're not going to pick it up. We want anybody that calls and you have a sofa, you can pick it up. That's what we're here for. I don't want to be putting dates on it, because that's what we had before. And I don't want our citizens to be put a notice that, well, if you don't have your sofa on March 21st of 2016 ready, if you call on March 22nd, we're not going to pick it up. Well, I don't know how you saw people feel, but I want you to pick it up. Anybody that calls needs to get picked up.
Yes, sir. We will follow you.
And if you want to charge them a little bit, fine, but that's what we're here for. Let's not go back. Once we start getting these things, you know, I don't like it, you know? I like what you're doing right now.
Yes, sir.
I don't like to be put days on and days off. Just do it. If you want to put it in the paper, that's fine, but I don't want to confuse the people that are paying for the services. How do you all feel? Maybe I'm the only one that feels this way, and if I'm the only one, then I'll shut up and just go ahead and do what you want to.
No, Mayor, I agree with you.
Okay. Well, here.
We do have this service, Mayor, already. It does exist on a day-to-day basis. I think the purpose of this program was mostly to give the person an opportunity who doesn't know about it or has have bulky items in the past and maybe inside the house or in the garage to get rid of it in a particular day. However, it's a service that we're providing on a daily basis anyhow. We'll make sure that we notify the public on that.
Well, as long as we do that, and we keep doing it, people are very happy with your services, but let's keep it that way.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Department's report, we have your reports in your packet. If you have any changes on those reports, don't hesitate to ask right now. If not, we do need a motion to approve the reports as there are in your packet.
I shall move, Mayor. Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Citizens' participation, do we have anybody from the audience who would like to address the council? Go ahead and state your name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Lloyd Burns. I'm the park manager at Chimney Park, 4224 South Conway Avenue, Mission. This last, earlier this year, we had trouble with the river down there. We had them in court twice. They didn't show up. They were fined twice. They were supposed to come back the third time after they'd been served, but they closed down. On February 27th, I called the police. And then on the morning of February 28th, an officer responded. Apparently, nothing was done. I called the dispatcher back up and had him call the police officer back down. The music went on to four o'clock in the morning. I have the officer's name, and he was a rookie, so I'm going to...
Who's the name of the officer?
Do you want to know the name?
Yes.
His name is F.E.R.N.U.I.K. His badge number is 518.
Okay.
Okay. On March the 5th, I called the police back again and had Officer S. Veragas, badge number 600, to come down and file the complaint. And then, again, her badge number is 466. And then again, on March 12th, we had it again this week, called the police at 10:38. The officer told me he couldn't do anything to 12 o'clock. Well, the music did stop at 12 o'clock at night. I'm trying to follow up. Is the river habits license back? And what is the noise ordinance in Mission?
Well, it's, I mean, I don't know if they know that they're only supposed to have their bar open until 12 o'clock.
Okay. But they've been going to four o'clock in the morning two times.
We're just going to have to find a way to stop them.
Well, they did stop it this last week, and I think it was because several residents called in, and I called in.
What time did it stop?
This last week, 12 o'clock at night.
12 o'clock?
Yeah. It did shut down at 12, exactly. Because I was out, because I told the officer I'd be calling back at 12, because I knew, I figured it was going to go to four o'clock in the morning again.
Okay. Well, the law is that they have to close the bars at 12 o'clock.
Okay.
And we'll stay on top of them, and then we'll...
Are they back in business, or... They're going to be open on Saturdays three times.
I don't know if they're in business or not.
Understanding this, that they're closed, Mayor, and that those are, that they're leasing to private parties, that's why I said...
I don't know them. I don't know if they have it open or not.
No.
Well, all we need to, they need to understand that we only have bars open in Mission till 12.
Well, that's what I was wondering, if they had a business license back or not, if they're just, like you said, you think they're doing private parties.
Well...
I don't want to get this started again this year. I mean, we had miserable time last year with these people. And my residents down there, what lives there and the winter check-ins will bring more revenue into this town than what that place is ever going to bring in, through local charities, local restaurants, all the businesses.
Where is the chief?
I talked to him. He was supposed, he was going to check into this for me.
He's supposed to check on it?
He was going to check in to see if they had the license or not. I haven't heard back from him, but I'm, that was the other day.
I hope they have a license.
We're talking about the river and the issues that we've had with the loud noises or loud music. Can you give us a report on that, Chief?
Yes, they do have a business license. However, they do not have a TABC license to have to sell alcohol. That's what I found out.
They don't have a license to sell alcohol?
They have no license to sell alcohol at this point.
What happened?
Basically, they told me, they told us that they were going, they actually stopped the operation of the business in its entirety.
So they have a license, they're just not operating the business?
Right. They're not operating.
Okay.
Apparently, about two, three, three Fridays ago, they did have a function.
Another one, another one too. One, the other one went to, well, the first one went to 4:00 AM in the morning, and the next one went to 5:00 AM in the morning.
Right.
And they were called both times, and nobody, nothing was ever done. I'm sorry. Both of them were new officers. I'll let it go.
Yes. And like I had told you, I mean, we write reports on those, you know, and you can file the criminal complaint like we did last time.
Yes.
So our officer's are open for that purpose, so he can file the criminal complaint. And, you know, like I explained to you, we can do that.
Okay. Well, let's see what happens this next weekend, and then if it goes on again this next weekend, I will file another complaint.
We'll follow up with that, sir, and we'll address those concerns and complaints.
I appreciate everything, and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else who would like to address the council? Okay, so we'll go on to our public hearings, and we'll ask Mr. DeGherina to step up to the plate. And we'll start with 1.1A.
Mayor, I want to ask if we go to the approvals and authorizations, and there's one there dealing with the city ordinance regarding the alcoholic beverage. If we can go to that one? 4.1?
4.1. Item 4.1, that's correct.
4.1?
4.1, sir. Yes, sir.
Approval and authorizations, okay.
There's just... Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item 4.1 is approval of ordinance, of an ordinance amending the Mission Code of Ordinances, Chapter 6, Alcoholic Beverages, Article 1, Section 6-3, Hours of Sale. The Mission City Council has determined that it is in the best interest of the City of Mission, Texas, to modify the hours of sale by repeating extended hours and authorizing the sale of alcoholic beverages pursuant to the standard hours as set out in the Texas Alcoholic Beverage Code, Chapter 105. The local ordinance, Section 6-3 of the City of Mission, hours of sale is hereby amended to read as follows. Monday through Friday would be standard hours, Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM till midnight. Saturday would be 7:00 AM to 1:00 AM. Sundays would be from noon to midnight, and in parentheses, you have there 10:00 AM, noon, only in conjunction with the service of food. And state law reference would be Texas Alcoholic Beverage Code 105.03.06 and Section 109.32. Staff is recommending approval of this ordinance, amending the Mission Code of Ordinances, Chapter 6, as is our city manager. This matters now before you.
Okay. This is a public hearing, so this is a public...
No, sir. This is under approvals and authorizations.
The ordinance number?
4320.
4320.
Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance 4320, setting the same standards as the Texas Alcohol.
We do have a motion to approve ordinance 4320. And a second. Do we have any questions, or anybody else? This is a amending the ordinance to close the bars at 12 o'clock. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Let's take care of that.
Yes, sir.
And we'll go back to item A.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Item 1.1A is a public hearing. This is for a rezoning of 10.285 acres, consisting of 0.394 of one acre tract out of an abandoned canal right away adjacent to the west, Lot 246, John H. Sherry subdivision, and 8.890 acres out of Lot 246, John H. Sherry subdivision, and 1.001 acres, being all of Lot 1, Whitney Ross subdivision, from agricultural interim to R3 multifamily residential district. The John and, the applicant is the John and Eleanor Townsend Family Trust, and this would require the adoption of an ordinance if the council was inclined to approve this. On February 24th of 2016, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The property is located along the west side of Taylor Road between Summer Breeze Avenue and East 20th. There was no public opposition during the planning commission meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval of the R3 zone. Staff recommends approval of this rezoning, as does our city manager. This is a public hearing. This matters now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? Are you in favor or against?
I'm in favor. Yes, sir, I'm in favor. My name is Jed Brown, Brownstone Forable Housing. We're part of the applicant team. We have, we're here. If you have any questions of us, we'd be happy to answer them for you. Thank you.
Second, Mayor.
42, 4321.
Anybody else? Anybody that would like to be in favor or against this? If not, well, we have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 4321. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item B.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1B is a public hearing. This is for a conditional use permit for a restaurant on a property zone C2. The address is 1233 East Griffin Parkway. This would be Lot 1 and the south 25 feet of Lot 2, Block 1, Bella Heights subdivision. Current zoning is C2 neighborhood commercial, and the applicants are Laura and Lupe Gonzalez. This would require the adoption of an ordinance if the council's inclined to approve it. On February 24th, 2016, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The property is located at the northwest corner of Orange Drive and Griffin Parkway. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval for one year. Staff made a recommendation to the P&amp;Z for three years, and staff is making a recommendation to the council for approval of this conditional use permit for three years, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing. This matters now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Yes, go ahead. State your name and address, please.
My name is Kathy Espinoza, and I live at 2308 Orange Street in Mission, directly north east of the restaurant. Was not able to attend the meeting on the 24th. We have had several issues with this, this restaurant, with the parking. We've made several complaints to the city, myself, my family, and the families on the street. And they've all been addressed, but it has continued. It's been a continued problem. The restaurant does not have sufficient parking, and our street is continuously blocked on both sides. If there's a car pulling into our street, there can only be one vehicle. We can't pull in and out at the same time because they park on both sides of the street. We were told that these would be monitored by the police, and there would be tickets issued, and that has not happened except one time when we did call and an officer came out. I'm not sure if they were tickets or warnings that were issued. It's a continuous problem with our mail delivery, trash pickup, and every time we address it, it just seems to, nothing changes.
Well, I went myself there. At one point, I know that the law office has permission, they have permission from the law office to park. I think that's enough, parking for them to use, and of course, their own parking, and we've gotten together with...
But they still park on the street.
Well, the certain area of the street that we're going to use and certain areas that we're not going to use. So I don't know if the police department has been over there. What did you manage to do over there the last time you were there?
We've taken several owners of cars there. Obviously, we can't be there all the time, but I know she's called, Mrs. Martinez has called. I just talked to Mrs. Martinez, maybe about two weeks ago. She's very good about calling me. As soon as the car parks in front of her house, I immediately send the unit. You know, from her side, I think we've taken maybe about four, five drivers that actually parked in front of her residence. We've also addressed some complaints she's had in the back of the alleyway as well.
They park in front of her driveway, or?
Off her house, sir. There's an area that no parking is in front of her house and Mrs. Martinez's house, and it's an area of 90 feet north of the boundary line of the restaurant.
But you know where they're supposed to park and where they're not supposed to park?
Yes.
So you're ticketing those people.
Okay.
That's what we can do right now, I think. We can't shut them down.
Okay. They've placed more signs in the front now that they've been opening for longer hours that we weren't made aware of, and the signs are blocking the view on, on the street. They put these signs that they're now open for dinner, and when you pull up to the side, you can't see the oncoming traffic when you're going to turn because the signs are in the way.
We'll address that concern, Mrs. Espinoza. I wasn't aware of that, but thank you for letting us know. Danny will handle that for us.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who would like to address this item?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
My name is Jimmy Sanchez, and I live at 2328 Orange Avenue. And I took some snapshots of what she's complaining about the view to the right. You did take care of the situation on, on the view to the left for the traffic that's coming from the east side going westbound. And now, we have a situation where I try to make a left. We got shrub, we got signs there, and if you look on that second page, you can see that I'm past the stop sign. So my vehicle's out into 495 again. So...
And that is on the recent sign that Mrs. Espinoza just bringing up, correct?
Right. So, you know, I just wanted to bring to you all the point because I brought the pictures.
We'll take care of that.
Thank you.
Can we keep these pictures? Is that okay?
Yes, you can keep them.
Okay. Thank you. We'll take care of that.
Anybody else who would like to address council on this item? If not, the recommendation is to adopt an ordinance 4321.
I make a motion to approve the ordinance to 4321.
Second.
A motion and second to approve the ordinance 4321. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. 4321.
22.
22. I'm sorry.
Item 1.1C, Mayor, is a public hearing. This is for a conditional use permit at T-Race Drive-Thru Convenience Store at 2502 West Business 83, Lots 131 and 132, Alabanza Number 4 subdivision. The current zoning is C3 General Business District. The applicant is Reynaldo Diaz, and this would require the adoption of an ordinance if the council's inclined to approve this CUP. On February 24th, 2016, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider the conditional use permit. The subject site is located on the northwest corner of Pisano Street and Business Highway 83. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff recommends approval of this conditional use permit for the drive-through for life of use, subject to the conditional use permit not being transferable to others, as does our city manager. This is a public hearing. This matters now before you.
Okay. Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, the motion would need to adopt...
So move, Mayor. Second. 4323.
43. We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 4323. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item D.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 1.1D is a public hearing for a conditional use permit. This is for portable building for the sale of water at 2301 Gold Avenue. This is Lot 97, Chaparral Heights subdivision. The current zoning is C2 neighborhood commercial, and the applicant is Gilbert Espinoza, and he's with Watermill Express. This would require the adoption of an ordinance if the council's inclined to approve it. On February 24th of this, this year, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider the conditional use permit. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Gold Avenue and Griffin Parkway. There was no opposition during the, the planning commission meeting. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval. Staff recommends approval for life of use of this conditional use permit, subject to it not being transferable to others. This is a public hearing. This matters now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, the adoption of the ordinance 4324. We do need a motion to approve this ordinance.
What to approve?
Second.
Ordinance 4324. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Item 1.1E is a public hearing. This is for a conditional use permit for the complimentary offering of alcoholic beverages for onsite consumption for a social and/or cultural event at 921 East 12th Street, being Lot 1, Mission Library subdivision, Zone R2. The applicant is Ms. Maxi Lu Link, and the upper, representing the Upper Valley Art League. This would require the adoption of an ordinance if the council's inclined. On February 24th of 2016, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider the conditional use permit. The property is located at the northeast corner area of Quica de la Garza and 12th Street. There was no public opposition during the planning commission meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval of this calendar year's events. I think you have an exhibit there. There's a calendar of events. Staff recommends approval of the 2016 events calendar for the Upper Valley Art League. This is a public hearing. This matters now before you.
The ordinance is 4325. We have...
What to approve?
Second.
We do need, anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? Against? I guess you're okay with Mrs.?
Maxi Lu.
Maxi Lu.
I'm Maxi Lu Link, president of the Upper Valley Art League.
You only have it for one, one day, or for the life of use?
It's for this coming year, for this calendar year.
It's for the coming year.
We do have the list of events that she's going to have at the location.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 4325. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Thank you.
I would just like to thank everybody. You've been such a wonderful group to help the Upper Valley Art League, and it's an honor for us to serve the city of Mission. Our membership right now is a hundred and sixty, but by the end of the year, it'll be two hundred, and our activities will keep right on going. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, thank you.
Item F?
Item one point one F is a public hearing. This is for a conditional use permit for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages at Asadero Los Cabritos Restaurant, located at fifteen twelve East Expressway eighty-three, suite one oh four, lot three, Stewart Plaza subdivision. The zoning of this property, C-three, general business district, and the applicant is Asadero's Los Cabritos Restaurant. This would require the adoption of an ordinance if the council's inclined to approve it. On February twenty-fourth, twenty sixteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing in order to consider this conditional use permit. The property is located at the southwest corner of Stewart Road and Expressway eighty-three, or I-two. There was no public opposition during the planning commission meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff recommends approval for three years, subject to the waiver of the three-hundred-foot separation requirement, and also compliance with a newly adopted ordinance forty-three twenty. This is a public hearing, this matters now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not...
I want to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance forty-three twenty-six. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor. Item one point one G is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages for Catholic War veterans, located at nine oh one North Slayball Avenue, also known as five hundred West Business Highway eighty-three. This would be lots seven through ten, block one fifty, Mission Original Townsite subdivision. The current zoning is C-four, and the applicant is Robert Garza, care of or with Catholic War veterans. This would require the adoption of an ordinance if the council's inclined to approve it. On February twenty-fourth, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Business eighty-three and Slayball. There was no public opposition during the P and Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff recommends approval for three years, subject to the waiver of the three-hundred-foot separation requirement from the nearest house, and also with compliance with a newly adopted alcohol ordinance of forty-three twenty. This is a public hearing, this matters now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, we ask that we go ahead and approve ordinance forty-three twenty-seven.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
A motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor. Item one point one H is a public hearing. This is also for a conditional use permit for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages at Adeli Celebration Hall, located at nineteen oh five West Griffin Parkway, lots one through four, Southern Oaks, phase one subdivision. The zoning is C-three, and the applicant is Daisy A. Vela, and this would require the adoption of an ordinance as well, if the council's inclined to approve it. On February twenty-fourth, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider the conditional use permit. The property is located approximately five hundred feet west of Inspiration Road on the south side of Griffin Parkway. There was no public opposition during the planning commission meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval of the conditional use permit for six months pending the installation of additional lighting and landscaping. Staff has talked to the owner that owns the building, and to the individual renting the building, and they are going to install twenty-two palm trees already and additional lighting. They're working on everything. Staff recommends approval for three years of this conditional use permit and compliance with our newly adopted ordinance forty-three twenty. This is a public hearing, this matters now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request?
Danny, is that next to a church?
It's the nice hall. Anybody in favor or against this request? If not, it's going to be ordinance forty-three twenty-eight. We do need a motion to approve the request, forty-three twenty-eight. Nobody wants to go ahead and give them a permit?
Second.
Forty-three twenty-eight. We have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance forty-three twenty-eight. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. That's all we did, give out permits for beer. So everybody's going to have a license by tomorrow. We have our minutes that we have for the meeting that we had on February the twenty-second of twenty sixteen. We do need to approve the disposition of minutes. So...
I want to approve.
Second, Mayor.
A motion and a second to approve the minutes that we had on February the twenty-second, twenty sixteen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. We also have to acknowledge the minutes that we had on Planning and Zoning and Zoning Those are, acknowledge the minutes that we had also for the Mission Civil Service Commission and the Citizens and Rights Committee, and those were on January the twenty-first and February the sixteenth. We do need a motion to acknowledge those minutes.
I want to approve the knowledge received of minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to acknowledge the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. We go on to item four point two. Mr. Tejera.
Item four point two is authorization to award bid for demolition of a building and content removal. Staff is seeking authorization to award bid for the demolition of a downtown building located at five oh eight North Conway Avenue. Staff received five bids and is recommending to award to G and G Contractors, who is the lowest responsive and responsible bidder in the amount of fourteen thousand eight hundred dollars. Services will include the removal of all brush, debris, junk, rubbish, trash, and weeds at this location. Pyramid construction was found not responsive because they failed to submit and sign and execute a conflict of interest questionnaire requested or required as per the general terms and conditions. Their bid was twelve thousand five, so we were going with the next lowest responsible bidder because they did not meet the requirements. Staff recommends to award this bid to G and G Contractors. You could see our finance director and our purchasing director also signed off on it as our city manager did. This matters now before you.
Any questions?
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second to authorize the bid to G and G Construction. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item?
Item four point three, Mayor Protem, is, this is a homestead exemption variance for the north, three point forty-eight acres, more or less of the south, eighteen point forty-eight acres of lot two seventy-two John H. Sherry subdivision. The address is twenty-eight fifteen North Glasscock Road, and the zoning is agricultural penintrom. The applicants are Rololfo and Diana Garcia. On December sixteenth of twenty fifteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this homestead exemption variance request. The property is located along the east side of Glasscock Road, about a half a mile north of Griffin Parkway. The board, the planning commission unanimously recommended approval as per staff's recommendations. Staff recommends approval, subject to compliance with the homestead exemption variance provisions. This is now before, this matters now before you.
Are there any questions or a motion to be offered?
Move for approval?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the homestead exemption variance as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Item four point four is the approval of ordinance amending sections one point two, one point four three two, one point four four two, one point four four A two, one point four five two, one point four six two of appendix A of the zoning of the code of ordinances to define and include credit access businesses and regulated lenders as permitted uses within the zoning districts C-three, C-four, C-five, light industrial and heavy industrial zoning districts. On March fourteenth, twenty sixteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission convened and approved the amendments to sections one point two and the sections one point four three two, as they're in your write-up, which are part of appendix A zoning of the code of ordinances to define and include credit access businesses and regulated lenders as permitted uses within C-three, C-four, C-five, light industrial and heavy industrial districts. The purpose of this ordinance is to, number one, amend the definitions section of the zoning code to add credit access businesses and regulated lenders to the definitions section of the zoning code. Two, to amend the applicable zoning districts to permit credit access businesses and regulated lenders as permitted uses, except that no new credit access business or regulated lender may be located within one thousand five hundred feet of another credit access business or regulated lender, measured in a direct line from property line to property line. And number three, to amend the permitted use sections of the zoning code to provide a catch-all phrase outlining the requirements for such uses. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval as per staff's recommendations. However, they did recommend a sunset clause for five years for the businesses that are currently in operation, which would mean that after five years, they would have to meet this criteria. However, staff, in talking to our city manager and our city attorney, we recommend that the ordinance be approved as is without the sunset clause. This matters now before you.
I move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the ordinance number, sorry.
Forty-three twenty-nine.
Forty-three twenty-nine. As is and as presented by staff. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Mayor Protem, so right now, this probably with this new ordinance, probably no new lenders will be coming to, since we have some existing ones, correct?
Correct. There's several along Conway and four ninety-five, and along the expressway right now, councilman. So we'll see, we'll review them and see if they meet the criteria, and if they do, we'll provide them with a license.
Thank you.
Thank you, Danny.
All right. Next item?
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. I'm here to present the approval as being requested to enter into interlocal agreement between mutual aid agreement for fire protection between the city of Mission and the city of Palmhurst. The mutual agreement has been approved by the city of Palmhurst already. And attached, you see the actual agreement?
Now, Chief, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Are those reimbursable fees equitable enough for the response that we're going to provide for them?
Yes, it's based on what we currently have with the county. We can, if you notice, the first three categories is exactly the county has. So we've already established all this with them. They wanted to copy what the county had. The only thing we added was the two categories, category four and category five. Category four, since they have no fire prevention or any kind of a PR, they would pay us to send them a fire prevention, if they have any event, like a night out or something like that, we have a fire prevention trailer and stuff like that. So we would actually charge them for that. And category five, the hundred and fifty dollars, since they also don't have a current investigation system, like the county has, the local county fire marshal's office. In case of category one, we will send over our fire marshal to investigate, thus adding the extra fee. But it's comparable with the county.
How about false alarms?
False alarms, they also pay us, which is the minimum of two fifty.
Yeah.
Yeah, false alarms. And quite a few of those.
Are there any other questions?
I shall move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to enter into the agreement with the city of Palmhurst for fire protection. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item?
Item four point six is the Mission Fire Department is seeking authorization to purchase a Zodiac FC four-two-zero Evanrude four, forty horsepower motor and trailer via GSA contract number GS zero-seven F zero-two-nine-eight V. This purchase will be paid through the twenty-fifteen Homeland Security Grant Program. This purchase files with the approved equipment. Tri-Marine and Industrial Supply is the only dealer in the state of Texas to do the sales, service, and warranty work for this brand, and it's compatible to the equipment used by state and federal response teams. It is also equipment our special operations teams have trained with the Texas Task Force. Now, it's be a one Zodiac mill pro GSA contract number GS zero-seven F zero-two-nine-eight V.
Okay. Are there any questions or a motion?
I shall move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the purchase of the Evanrude motor and trailer. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Hi. Good afternoon. Bring before you item four point seven, authorize the lease of employee uniforms with CINTAS via U.S. Communities Contract Twelve J L H zero-eleven C. Staff is seeking authorization to renew lease contract for fiscal year twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen with CINTAS for employee uniforms by way of U.S. Communities Contract Twelve J L H zero-eleven C for parks and recreation, public works, utility, and golf course employees. Uniforms replacement and wash service will be provided under this contract. Taxes are proposed with estimated quantities of unit cost per uniform piece. Unit costs will remain firm for the renewal period. Authorization to enter into a contract with CINTAS via U.S. Communities.
Okay. Any questions or a motion?
Move for approval?
Second.
I have a question. These are all employees that you have from the departments that you mentioned? All of them that are in the field, right?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Thank you, sir. No further questions.
There's a motion and a second to approve the lease for uniforms for employees. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem, City Council. Item four point eight is the write-off on collectible utility account receivable for the third quarter of twenty-fourteen. Attached for your review is the approval, is a summary of the amounts to be written off at this time. These amounts are, it's a three-month period from July through September of twenty-fourteen, the amount of twenty-three thousand nine oh eight. Staff recommend, recommends the approval of the bandit write-off as presented.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the utility accounts, collectible accounts. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Item four point nine? Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Four point nine is the utility billing department is requesting authorization to surplus the attached list of equipment for the purpose of selling the items on GovDeals online auction. These items are not being used by the department or have become obsolete. Staff is recommending that the attached list of equipment is be declared surplus.
I move for approval?
Authorization to surplus?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
A second to go ahead and authorize the surplus. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Four point ten, Tony Rosa?
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. I come before you with item four-ten, which is authorization to award bid for the purchase of pest control services. On January twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen, City Council authorized staff to solicit bids for pest control services, which includes labor, materials, and equipment required for preventative pest control services for numerous city buildings. The city of Mission has accepted and opened three bid responses for pest control services. Staff recommends awarding bid to Clean Fix, who is the lowest responsible bidder, meeting all specifications in the amount of five thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars. Staff recommends authorization to pest control services.
Who's, who are we wanting to do?
I'm sorry?
Who is going to get the?
Oh, the name of the company is called Clean Fix.
Those are the guys that you want to?
Yes, sir. They're the lowest bidders.
Okay, we do need a motion to approve the lowest bid.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
A motion and a second to award the lowest bid on the pest control services. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Thank you. Resolution fourteen thirty-six?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I bring before you item four point eleven, approval of resolution to adopt an air county hazard mitigation plan. The Office of- The Office of Emergency Management is seeking approval of resolution for the approval of participating in the Idaho County Hazard Mitigation Plan. The mitigation plan is designed to reduce or eliminate long-term risks to people and property in the city from the impacts of future hazards and disasters. Our participation and adoption of such plan is required from Fima to be eligible for awarding of grants. The City of Mission is one of thirteen participants and entities in Idaho County. This item is now before you.
So move, mayor.
Second.
Is that, uh, resolution fourteen thirty-six?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have, uh, motioned and a second to approve resolution fourteen thirty-six. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Steve Dominguez?
Good evening, mayor, city council. First item, the Mission Police Department in review of our current record ordinance has found the need to distinguish between light and heavy-duty record service, amending section one eighteen dash eighty-one. By redefining the rotation list to include light duty and heavy-duty rotation list, we are requesting to amend section one eighteen dash eighty-five-A by identifying light duty list and further amend the ordinance by adding A-one to include heavy-duty list. Amend section one eighteen one fifty-nine-A by providing two eligible lists as far as records are concerned. Furthermore, amending section one eighteen one sixty-B by deleting exemption from heavy-duty record company storage yard locations, providing that the yard must be located within the city limits of the City of Mission or its two-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction. Finally, amending Article five, section one eighteen dash one eighty-one rates and fees by including fees for heavy-duty toes. The City of Mission Police Department is requesting approval of the aforementioned amendments to the record ordinance.
Okay, the new, the new ordinance would be fourteen thirty-seven.
Fourteen thirty-seven.
Forty-three thirty, mayor.
I'm sorry. Forty-three thirty.
Move for approval, mayor?
Second. Um, we do have a motion and a second to approve ordinance forty-three thirty. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item four thirteen?
The Mission Police Department is requesting approval of a resolution to submit an agreement for the temporary closure of State Rightof Way to the Texas Department of Transportation for the annual Arlaya Guadalupe Palm Sunday procession. The agreement is required by the Texas Department of Transportation for the closure of southbound lanes of Conway from Sixth Street to U.S. eighty-three expressway and southbound lane of Farm to Market Road ten sixteen to Farm to Market Road four ninety-four ending at La Lomita Chapel. The Mission Police Department will be responsible for securing the route.
This would be order, resolution fourteen thirty-seven then?
A move for approval?
Second. We do have a motion and a second to approve fourteen thirty-seven. That will give our Arlaya Guadalupe Palm Sunday approval for the procession. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Fourteen, four fourteen?
The City Mission Police Department was, is requesting authorization to accept additional grant funds from the County of Idaho for Operation Stone Garden twenty-fourteen. Grant number twenty-fourteen SR four-eight-two-one-five dash zero-one. The Mission Police Department was initially awarded three hundred thousand dollars. Our department was currently working in an operation with U.S. Border Patrol and additional funds were made available to work the operation in the amount of thirty thousand dollars. The additional funds will be solely be utilized for overtime to work the aforementioned operation. Staff again requests authorization to accept the additional funds from the County of Idaho.
The, uh? So move, mayor.
Second.
The grant is how much?
Thirty thousand dollars more, mayor.
We do have a motion and a second to approve the, to, to authorize the exception of, uh, additional grant funds of thirty thousand. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. I want to commend you guys for doing all this. You all bring a lot of money into the city. And I've been to tell, to say that the last time, but it's amazing how much money you all bring into the city and helps us out quite a bit.
Well, I appreciate that, mayor, and I think also I, I gotta give credit to the sheriff as well. Um, he's worked with us very well. Actually, our initial grant was three hundred thousand, uh, and he gave us another sixty thousand. This is another thirty thousand, so we have a great working relationship and really to, to help our community and keep our community safe.
Well, I'm very proud of you guys doing all this for us.
Thank you, sir.
Four fifteen?
The Mission Police Department is requesting authorization to accept the twenty-sixteen law enforcement officer standards and education layos funds from the Texas Controller of Public Accounts. The funds nine thousand five hundred and forty-eight and thirty-eight cents are to ensure the continuing education of persons licensed under chapter seventeen oh one of the occupations code, to provide the necessary training by my office to our full-time, fully-paid law enforcement support personnel in our agency. Again, this is to accept these funds from the, uh, Controller of Public Accounts.
We do need a motion to authorize to accept the funds? More to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Four sixteen?
Thank you.
Mr. Bella?
Good evening, mayor, city council. Item four sixteen is the approval of the attached budget amendments. We have three. The first is for the general fund. It's a request to reclassify twenty-seven thousand dollars from police and fire supplies to machinery and equipment, and this is for the fire department to purchase some breathing apparatus equipment needed for the fire department.
Budget amendment?
Yes. The second and the third ones are for the designated purpose fund, which is our grant fund, and these two are, were just presented by Chief Dominguez, and it's the thirty thousand for the Operation Stone Garden and the nine thousand five forty-eight for the layos funds, and it's to set up the budget for those two items.
Okay, so these are the amendments that we have to make to approve the, uh, to accept the monies.
Move for approval, mayor?
Okay. Well, I didn't hear her very well, so. We have, we need a motion to accept, uh, to do the special amendment. Second. A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item four shift seventeen is the tax collection report?
Item four seventeen is a tax collections report for January twenty sixteen. This is for the acceptance of the monthly property tax report for the month of January twenty sixteen. The twenty fifteen total adjusted tax levy was nineteen million one hundred and forty-four thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollars and thirty-six cents, and the amount of the collections as of January thirty-first, twenty sixteen is sixteen million four hundred and fifty-five thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars and six cents, which represents eighty-five point ninety percent of the total tax levy. And just for your information, at this time last year, it was eighty-five point twenty-seven, so we're in on track.
Okay, we need a motion to approve the tax collection? More to approve?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
Four eighteen, Mr. Terrasso?
Terrasso. Good afternoon, mayor and city council. I come before you to present item four point eighteen, authorize staff to engage highest qualified proposal for engineering services for inspection, material testing and construction management for inspiration road reconstruction, and authorize city manager to execute contract incident there too. City council authorized staff to solicit request for qualifications, RFQs, for engineering services in accordance with the Texas Professional Service Procurement Act, VTC A Government Code Section twenty-two fifty-four point zero-zero-one. Proposals received were referred to an evaluation committee I appointed to review and evaluate on the basis of demonstrated competence and qualifications to perform the services. Staff received three proposals. The evaluation committee comprised of the public works director, planning director and city engineer evaluated all proposals submitted. All proposals were evaluated on set criteria outlining in the RFQs. After careful evaluation and assessment, the evaluation committee deemed that LNG consulting engineering is the highest qualified firm to perform the engineering services for inspection, material testing and construction management for inspiration road reconstruction, as per Government Code Section thirty-two fifty-four point zero-zero-three selection of provider. Staff will engage firm in negotiations for fair and reasonable form fixed rates. Attached will find the tabulation results. Staff recommendation engage LNG engineering in negotiations and execute a contract for professional services.
Okay.
A move for approval, mayor?
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and accept the recommendation of LNG. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Okay.
Thank you, mayor.
You know where he's standing? Okay, this is where I want everybody to stand, so we can hear them.
Okay.
Okay, Piet Barate?
Well, he's still on, sir.
Yeah, you're still on?
Still having the item, sir.
Okay.
Yes.
So I just wanted you all about to know that where he stands is where we can hear. Is that?
Yes.
Because I can't hear him. They get too close to the mic.
Oh, okay.
So where he's standing, we can hear them. I can hear them. I don't know about you guys.
Yeah.
I'm good, too.
Okay.
We'll mark that, mayor. Thank you.
So I just want to let you know, when you see somebody coming to speak to us, we want to correct them that, then it's, they stand where he's at, so, so we can understand.
Okay.
Okay, four nineteen?
Thank you, mayor and city council. Also have item four point nineteen, authorization to award bid to Melba Carter Drainage Ditch Improvements. City council gave authorization to solicit bids for Melba Carter Drainage Ditch Crossing Improvements south of U.S. eighty-three. The City of Mission has accepted and opened six bid responses for this project. Staff is recommending awarding bid to Diamondback Contractors, who is the lowest responsible bidder, meeting all, all specifications in the amount of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars. See attached bid tabulations with breakdown totals. Staff recommendation award bid to Diamondback Contractors.
Move for approval, mayor?
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve, uh, a contract to Diamondback Construction?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Four twenty?
Thank you.
Take it easy. You don't like to stand. Well, whoever can hear you.
Mayor and council, item four point twenty is the approval of resolution recognizing the Mission Food Pantry Incorporated for serving the interest of the residents of the City of Mission. The Mission Food Pantry Incorporated is a Texas nonprofit corporation, having been incorporated and established its constitution and bylaw since nineteen ninety-seven. The purpose of the Mission Food Pantry Incorporated is to provide emergency aid to the low and moderate income households by providing food, clothing and blankets in the Mission area. The City of Mission recognizes the longstanding relationship with the Mission Food Pantry as promoting a public purpose of the city and is consistent with the city's economic and social goals to benefit the residents of Mission. Staff is recommending approval of resolution number?
Fourteen thirty-eight.
Fourteen thirty-eight.
I move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution fourteen thirty-eight. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Four twenty-one, Eda?
Four twenty-one is the authorization to enter into a facility lease agreement with the Mission Food Pantry, leasing a portion of the Mission Social and Support Center. Attached is the agreement between the City of Mission and the Mission Food Pantry for a rental of the portion of the Mission Social and Support Center located at one fifteen South Mayberry. The term of this lease is for the, for a period of three years to begin on March first, twenty-sixteenth through February twenty-eighth, twenty-nineteen, at which time the lease shall be automatically extended for an additional three-year term. The amount of the lease is one dollar per year. The landlord shall be responsible for all utilities and services in connection with the lease premises. The City of Mission has a longstanding relationship with the Mission Food Pantry as promoting a public purpose for the city and is consistent with the city's economic and social goals to benefit the residents of Mission. Mayor and council, this was also, um, approved by the Mission Food Pantry Board last week. They are here today. Mr. Jerry Foster is the, um, the president of the organization, and he, along with several board members, are here to, to show that they approve of this, uh, of this lease agreement.
What is it?
And they could please stand and be recognized?
Well, we appreciate, um, all the help you all give our community, and, uh, we're just, we're just, uh, very glad to be part of, um, part of the, uh, operation, and, um, I'm glad that we were able to get this building going and lease it to you for one dollar a year, and we'll do everything we can to help you with, um, with food and anything we can help you with. And, um, we do need a motion to enter into a? More to approve? Agreement.
Second.
For another year, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Thank you very much, Eda.
Thank you.
Four twenty-two, it's Robert Salinas.
Robert Salinas.
Yes, sir. Good evening, mayor, city council members. Come before you seeking authorization to execute first one-year renewal option for flex-based commercial caliche for the Public Works Department. The contract terms were for one year with two one-year renewal options based on two percent increase in price. Staff seeking authorization to extend contract for the first one-year renewal option from eight dollars and eighty-eight cents, uh, per ton to nine, nine dollars and six cents per ton with I O C Company, LLC. Recommendation is solely, uh, based on estimated quantities, and all orders will be placed on a mass-needed basis throughout the one-year term. Against, staff recommendation is extend contract for the first one-year renewal option with I O C Company for the flex-based commercial caliche.
Okay, we do need a motion to authorize the? So move, mayor. Second. Contract with a two percent increase. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Four twenty-three, Robert?
Yes, sir. Mayor, city council members, this next agenda, item four point twenty-three, is the authorization to execute first one-year renewal option, uh, for ready-mixed concrete for the Public Works Department. The contract terms are for one year with two one-year renewal options based on five percent increase in price. Staff seeking authorization to extend contract for the first one-year renewal option from ninety-eight dollars per cubic yards, uh, to ninety-nine dollars per cubic yards with Kappa upper value materials. Again, the contract was for five, uh, percent increase in price, and they opted to go with one point oh two percent increase, uh, for this, uh, uh, item material. Again, our recommendation is based solely on estimated quantities, and orders will be placed on a mass-needed basis throughout the one-year term. Against, staff recommendation is extend contract for the first one-year renewal option with Kappa upper value materials for the concrete ready mix.
Yeah, we need a motion to approve? So move, mayor.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the renewal contract with Kappa. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Four twenty-four, Robert?
Uh, yes, sir. Mayor, city council members, this next agenda, item four point twenty-four, is the authorization to execute first one-year renewal option for roadside mowing and litter removal services. The contract terms were for one year with two one-year renewal options based on five percent increase in price. Staff seeking authorization to extend contract for the first one-year renewal option, roadside mowing from, uh, forty-eight dollars and fifty cents per acre to, uh, fifty dollars and ninety-three cents per acre, litter removal from, uh, fifteen dollars and fifty cents per acre to sixteen dollars and twenty-eight cents per acre, and spot litter removal from one dollar per acre to, uh, one dollar and five cents per acre with Gulf Coast Contractors, Inc. Again, recommendation is based solely on estimated quantities, and orders will be placed on a mass-needed basis throughout the one-year term. Against, staff recommendation is to extend contract for the first one-year renewal option with Gulf Coast Contractors, Inc.
We do need a motion to approve the, um, the authorization to renew their contract.
A move.
Second.
Second. A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item four twenty-five?
Uh, yes, sir. Mayor, city council members, this next agenda, item four point twenty-five, is the authorization to execute the first one-year renewal option for hot mix and cold mix asphalt material for the Public Works Department. Again, the contract terms were for one year with two one-year renewal options based on zero percent increase in price. Staff seeking authorization to extend contract for the first one-year renewal option, hot Hot mix with delivery at sixty-one dollars ninety-five cents per ton and cold mix with delivery at eighty-three dollars per ton with IOC Company LLC. Again, recommendation is based solely on estimated quantities, and orders will be placed on a mass-needed basis throughout the one-year term. Against, staff recommendation is to extend contract for the first one-year renewal option with IOC Company LLC. If you notice, there's a mistake there, typo on the staff recommendation item, and it's with IOC Company LLC for this item.
So that's for item four twenty-five. You want us to renew?
Yes, Mayor.
Need a motion to?
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the renewal. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Four twenty-six?
Yes, sir, Mayor. City Council members, this next agenda item four point twenty-six. Is the authorization to execute payment for the wastewater treatment plant, uh, emergency repairs. Um, staff is requesting to execute payment for the repairs to J and E Lift Station Services, LTD, in the amount of twelve thousand five hundred and thirteen dollars with eighteen cents for the wastewater treatment plant, uh, emergency repairs due to a, to placement and rerouting of electrical faulty connection and reconnection of bar screen control unit. Against, staff recommendation is approval of payment for emergency repairs to J and E Lift Station Services.
Okay, we need to, how much is the payment?
It's for twelve thousand five hundred and thirteen dollars with eighteen cents.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
A motion and a second to authorize the, the payment for the wastewater plant, the branch repairs. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item four twenty, uh, four twenty-seven?
Uh, yes, sir. Mayor, City Council members, this next agenda item, item four point twenty-seven. Is the authorization to solicit bids for sixteen-inch water line loop construction. The water line loop construction will increase an equalized water pressure and volume between the Benson Water Tower and Madero Water Tower. The new water infrastructure will be use, of use for new development in the vicinity of the Benson Development and the Madero Community Area. The estimated cost for this project, Mayor, is six hundred and twenty-five thousand eight hundred dollars, and staff recommended to solicit for bids for this construction project.
Okay, but this is for six hundred and what?
Six hundred and twenty-five thousand eight hundred dollars.
For the water line?
For the water line, sixteen-inch water line.
Okay, would you, um?
I'm move to approve?
Second.
Yeah, motion and a second to approve the, uh, the authorization to solicit bids for a sixteen-inch water line loop time construction. You're going to accept this bid?
It's, uh, to solicit for bids.
Solicite for bids, that's what I did.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we need a motion, we have a motion and a second to solicit for bids. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. What you meant, what did you have, six hundred and seven hundred thousand?
It, that's the estimated cost, engineering estimated cost.
Were you confused when you do that?
Okay, now it's just?
We're making a motion to approve the bid.
Oh, okay, okay, no, no, no. It's the estimated cost that we have to?
And, like, los confundes aquí estamos, bueno, es comenzando.
I need to move back.
You want us to pay all this money?
Thank you, Robert.
Four twenty-eight, Ms. Carrillo?
Yes, Mayor, Council. Good afternoon. Item four twenty-eight is approval of the Election Services Contract for the May seventh, twenty sixteen, City of Mission General Election with the Idaho County Elections Administrator. Uh, estimated cost for the contract, Mayor, for the May election is thirty thousand five hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty-two cents, and we're recommending approval of the Election Services Contract.
Okay, we need a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the cost of twelve thousand five twenty-six. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand.
Huh?
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand.
I thought it was twelve thousand.
Thirty thousand five hundred and twenty-six.
Thirty thousand?
Five hundred and twenty-six.
And they're paying the clerks the minimum wage?
Uh, no, sir. They're paying twelve dollars and eleven dollars, so they went up a little bit on their, their, uh, their hourly rate.
The cost is thirty thousand five twenty-six. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Four twenty-nine?
Uh, four twenty-nine, Mayor, we have an approval of a resolution. This is for the City of Mission, McAllen, and Idaho regarding an acquisition, maintenance, and operation of an international vehicle bridge. However, I believe our city attorney wants to take us into executive session.
Mr. Mayor, if we can go into executive session with a consultation with attorney exception.
Do you have any comments, um?
No, Mayor, no comments.
Well, I have a bunch of comments, but I'm not going to say them today, so. Would you need a motion to go into? Here, I move that we move into executive session pursuant to VTC A Government Code, Section five-five-one point zero zero one.
Second.
A motion and a second to go into executive session. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against, motion carries. Okay, we need a motion to? So move, Mayor.
Second.
Motion and second to reconvene. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against, motion carries. The first item that we have is one of the? What's the name of it?
Thank you, sir.
We're not seeing it, Council.
Mr. Mayor, the, the next item is four point two nine.
The four twenty-nine?
Yes, Your Honor. Yes, Mayor.
The resolution which, uh, we have?
Uh, yes, sir. Um, Mayor, City Council, again, good afternoon. Item four point twenty-nine is the approval of a resolution. This is a resolution regarding the cities of Mission, McAllen, and Idaho for the purpose of stating the intention of commencing the Madero Bridge Project. Uh, this project would be a commercial cargo-only bridge. The agreement set out in the resolution allows for the Anseluas Bridge Board to select an engineering firm to perform several studies to include destination, commercial traffic, and financial planning studies. Upon completion of the studies, the cities will enter into an agreement dealing the necessary terms for the project. The agreement further states that the cities have agreed to the following allocations: Mission twenty-three percent, McAllen forty-four percent, and the City of Idaho thirty-three percent. Also, part of this resolution is the allotment of board members who would also agree to serve, and this would be the mayors of Mission, the Mayor of McAllen, and the Mayor of Idaho will be full-voting members of the Madero Bridge, and the remaining two members will be appointed, one by the City of Mission and the second by the City of McAllen. This is basically a resolution saying that the City of Mission believes that this Madero Bridge is a good project to move forward, taking this resolution to the Anseluas Board Bridge for their approval to move forward with the project.
That's the resolution number?
Fourteen thirty-nine.
Fourteen? So move, Mayor.
Second.
The motion and second to approve resolution fourteen thirty-nine. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Seven point one?
Mr. Mayor, Council, seven point one A, after discussion, after consultation with attorney, there will be no action taken on this item. Seven point two A, deliberation regarding employment agreement of the city manager. If the council is inclined to take action, we would need a motion to authorize the mayor to renegotiate the terms of the employment agreement of city manager within the parameters discussed in executive session.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. That, uh, we need a motion to adjourn.
I'm move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. We adjourned.